Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting for the Winton Woods City School District. It is 6:30 PM on Monday, February 26, 2018. If everyone could please silence your devices. I know we have a full house tonight, so we don't want to have any interruptions of our wonderful community and students. And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Kinn.
Here.
Mrs. Ruglis.
Here.
Mr. Birdy.
Here.
Mrs. Miranda.
Present. First item on the agenda tonight is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. It was a very difficult decision to select this incredible artwork, but I've windled it down to two. They told me to come away with one. I couldn't do it. So, the superintendent's selection for the art gallery is Jade Coates and Kwana Jones. These art pieces look absolutely professional. They told me I can hang these on my wall until...
Thank you.
Incredible, incredible work. That was, it was a very difficult decision because there were so many incredible pieces. And so, I think the kids do such a fantastic job with the art. All right. The next selection was the principal selection, and Princess Dyer. Okay, I need everyone to repeat after me. "I wish I was here."
So, I was here, it's at Glenwood Gardens in Woodlawn, for my sister's birthday. So, we just spent like a couple hours there and watched the sunset. And I thought it would be really nice to paint. And Ms. Becky was really helpful, because I've never done like a really intense sunset painting before. But, I really like how it came out.
Okay, you got it. Unfortunately, our honorable mention student, Darian Hazard, is ill tonight, but we still wanted to show his piece. And we will bring him back at next month's meeting.
It's a self-portrait, so you don't know where he goes. He looks like his sister. Hi, I'm Darian.
Incredible piece. So now on to, that was the high school gallery. Now on to the intermediate school gallery winners. Art teacher, Mr. Aaron Smits. Aaron, are you here? Okay. Aleah Vanner. This is the superintendent's selection. Right there. Our theme for the Freedom Center, National Underground Freedom Center, is "Rise Up." And so, I think her portrait actually depicts that in a very, very special way. Way to go. I would like for her to speak. And before you speak, can you turn, turn your back a little bit, so they can see the beautiful book bag?
But, um, it kinda took like three or four months to make it. I had a little problem trying to do the background, but I love the way it turned out.
And so do I. Okay, who did you bring with you tonight? Okay, they want to get in the picture. They just talked to me. Come on, get a picture with your parents and your... So, does Mom inspire you to draw that way?
Yes.
The principal selection is Andrew Escobedo. Mr. Day, say, "We want to take this to a 3D format." Very good. Give him that picture. And then we'll get a picture with his parents. All right, parents?
Sophia, everybody?
Yes.
Come on up.
Fantastic. I think Mr. Day would do better going up the stairs. Is Amber here tonight? Now that's really about rising up.
Also, rise up theme.
Yes, comforting another student. Fantastic. We're going to move on to the characters, the Kwana's characters, key award, citizenship. Is there a member from the Kwana's Club here tonight?
Yes.
Yes, come up, sir. Is Ayesha here?
Yeah.
So before he gives her the award, I want to read some great things about Ayesha. So this comes from Mr. John Bysho, the Winton Woods School Lead Counselor. "I enthusiastically recommend Ayesha for your scholarship consideration. I've known Ayesha for the past two years, and she is one of my most memorable students during that time. Ayesha endured herself to me when we first met because she insisted I learn how to pronounce her name. She finally wrote her name out phonetically for me, so that I could pronounce it correctly. Her note remains in my desk every day, just in case I forget. I love that initiative and that insistence that she addressed it correctly." What I discovered at this time went on, as time went on, is that Ayesha is like this in all that she does. She does her very best, expects that everyone does well. She pushes herself to excel. She has an excellent work ethic and time management skills. She presently works in my office one day a day, and she is a pleasure to have around. She comes in each day with a positive attitude and looks for work to complete. She cannot sit still and must always be doing something, and I find this endearing, but also very helpful. She accomplishes a great deal in a short time with her boundless energy. We recently held our college career fair, and Ayesha came early and stayed late to help out. She greeted our college visitors at the door, helped them find their places in the fair, and was generally excellent help. Her enthusiasm and optimism is infectious. I love her willingness to help others, whether it's tutoring or serving as a warrior ambassador." Ayesha.
Thank you.
I've always wanted to, you know, have an award presented by the Board of Education since I was a freshman, so I'm really happy that I did it.
Ayesha, come back. Who came with you tonight? Mom, come up for the picture, please. Your big brother came?
My little brother.
Our next award goes to Mr. Mark Barron. He is the Gold Star Kwana Student of the Month. Is Mark here tonight? So I'm going to read a little bit about Mark as he stands there and looks handsome and having air. "Mark Barron is an outstanding ninth grader at Winton Woods, who is extremely deserving of being Student of the Month. Mark has maintained straight A's through his time at high school and middle school, for that matter. Teachers have reported that he is a leader in the classroom and usually chosen leader in this group. He participates, works well with others, and always gets the job done. Mark's wonderful qualities extend well beyond the classroom. Mark is on, is our school, in our school band. He earned first-chair symphonic band trombone as a ninth gr-" Oh, that's impressive." For the music people in the room, you do understand what first-chair means, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. "He is also an accomplished musician and actor. Earliest month, Mark entered the OMEA solo ensemble competition and earned top honors. He is also, he is also, he was also in the school play, and is now in the school musical and takes acting classes. And if that wasn't enough, he is a two-sport athlete with cross-country and swimming, and is part of the sustainability club helping the environment. To say that Mark Barron does it all is an understatement. He is a true jack-of-all-trades, thriving at everything he takes on. I cannot think of a young, a young man more deserving of Student of the Month than Mr. Mark Barron." Fantastic. Come on, Dad, Mom. Amber? Amber. And her art piece, that was incredible. I think Jade Coates just arrived as well. Is Jade? Jade here, Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, so Jade, here's the rule. Anyone taller than me has to speak.
Everybody up.
What inspired you to draw it? I think that was incredible when I saw it.
Yeah, we have to do a bunch of small objects for object study, and I chose the dolphins.
Incredible. Great job.
That's very nice.
No, she's just showing people up there. Ms. Jordan won't let her get out the door with it. Okay, our next award is the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, and Trayvon Poole. We will wait for you, Trayvon. We know you're coming. The Skyline Teacher of the Month is Ms. Janay Hunche.
Janee.
Janee. Reading, reading this, reading this one actually just kind of brought tears to my eyes, because how many people in this room ever struggled in math?
Oh, Lord, yes.
Okay, all right, well, too bad I didn't. No, seriously. Having, having a math teacher that inspires you is absolutely wonderful. So, it says, "It's not often that a district is able to hire a math teacher as seasoned as Ms. Hunche. She came to Winton Woods High School for the 2017-18 school year with 31 years of experience. She teaches many of the higher-level math courses at Winton Woods High School, including pre-calculus, calculus, and AP calculus. The Winton Woods High School administrative team stated, 'She brings a great deal of math knowledge to Winton Woods High School. Her experience is an asset to the math department. Even with her experienced teaching, a more traditional curriculum, she's jumped into teaching problem-based learning with a new tech model. Even early in the year, she had her classes and a lobby working hard on items to use math as a means to solve a breakout challenge. Both the students and Ms. Hunche, who were having fun and learning all at the same time, shared the Winton Woods High School administrators. For this reason, Ms. Hunche is Winton Woods High School Teacher of the Month for February.'" Why do you love teaching math?
I love teaching math here at Winton Woods, because I can teach the theory, but show how it's applied and every day, how it's applied every day. So kids no longer ask me, "When are we ever going to use this?" They know right away, right out of the chute, when they would use it.
So, you inspire us every day. Thank you for everything.
Well, thank you.
All right. Okay, Ms. Becky Youngs? Ms. Megan, smarter here? Mr. David Simon? The Winton Woods Board of Education congratulates the following students who won awards in this year's competition. Tiana Allen, honorable mention. Darian Hazard, honorable mention. Dailin Nito, honorable mention. And for the middle school, Camila Cruzmore. And Rohan Gori, honorable mention. So, we just need a spokesperson for this great group.
Our kids are amazing. What they did in scholastics was amazing. I think the artwork speaks for itself. I hope you like it. We do get scholarships for every honorable mention, gold, key, silver key, and it's stacked to the Art Academy. So, for example, essentially, Darian Hazard could have $1,400 for the Art Academy, but he's going to DAP. So, anyway. But, it's wonderful, and it's great to see their artwork in the show. And when we went down to see the show, I thought that our artwork was the best.
Do we have, is Camila, Camila Cruzmore, does she show up?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good. Yes. And finally, our Hamilton County Health Department Clean Kitchen Award. Our great chef, Mr. Mark Doctor. Is he here? Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, very good. I appreciate you all.
anything. I said chef, because that's what he is. So, that's a very, very noteworthy title. Winton Woods City Schools Food Service, Mr. Mark Doctor, Food Service Director and Chef. Congratulations to Mr. Doctor and the food service staff for earning the Clean Kitchen Award. Hamilton County Public Health introduced the Clean Kitchen Award in 2011. This award is available only to the top greater Cincinnati-area food service operator, retail food establishment, licensed performers in facility sanitation and food safety education, and all of our schools were awarded. Fantastic. Fantastic. You are the spokesperson.
Let me stand up like Mr. Day. Sorry, had to do it. Well, couldn't do it. I mean, this is their, this is their moment to shine, not mine. I'm just the spokesperson. They do all the heavy lifting and the deep cleaning, so... I'm going to try to do this. Are we good? We have Primary North, Beth. Stephanie is, does our Primary South, she's our manager. We have Mary. Mary pretty much pulls us out of harm's way all the time. We have Vicki Kenninger, who is my assistant, and she keeps me in line. At middle school, we have Star Simpson. And Ms. Bev, she's been here, what, 25 years? And she's been clean every year. So, she's here representing the high school, along with Shauna. Good. Alicia. Kim Henry is with... It's almost over. We'll be right with you. Kim Henry is with the elementary school, which is, which is doing fantastic, by the way. They just started some very interesting, innovative procedures over there. And then we have Ms., I always forget your name. Sherry. She's our intermediate. And our latecomer here is Carol. So, please.
Let's go right up front, everybody, to a picture.
One more. One more.
She's going to have to stretch a little bit more.
Congratulations to all of our amazing student artists, all of our community, all of our students, period, and our wonderful chef and his nutrition department, let's call it that. I know you guys or you gals go underappreciated sometimes, so we greatly appreciate everything you do, and thank you for being here. And at this time, we're going to take a recess. All right. Okay, we're going to move back into session into our regular meeting. Okay, so, we're going to get through a little bit of our meeting here first, the action items here in our meeting, before we go into a closed session. So we will save that right before item 10. And we do not have any public comments, so we will go right into item number six. So Board members, unless you see any revisions necessary to the minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the five meeting minutes as presented.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn.
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and we will move into item number seven. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor for your treasurer's report.
Thanks for approving all the minutes. I think we're caught up now.
Yes, we are.
From the January 1st. In your financial report, we're through the month of January, and our year-to-date revenues in the general fund were 26.9 million, with our month-to-date at 2.7 million, which was mostly real estate tax advances. Our expenditures in the general fund are running at 29.1 million, and we're currently approximately 3.8% under budget. The month of January, as you probably may have noticed, the benefits were slightly higher because in the month of January is when the Board of Education makes their contribution to the employee's health savings account. And that contribution for single was 950 this year, and for the family plan was 2,250. And the employee has a first deductible, they pay the first 5,000 on a family and the first 2,700 on a single plan. So that came to 415,000 for the month of January. And as you recall, in November, we had a premium holiday because of our healthcare consortium had been running well, so we saved approximately 5,000. So, we saved approximately 500,000 for the month of November. With that being said, we're running, that helped our budget to be currently at a savings of approximately $2 million. For, for all financial activity, we had a balance of 71.6 million, of which 13 was the general fund, 10 million the building fund, and 47 million classroom facilities. So, I don't know if you have any particular questions, but the classroom facilities will start to dwindle as we encumber funds for obligations of the new project.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Any questions for Treasurer Seymour or comments? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and let the financial statement for the month of January 2018 be submitted to audit. And Mr. Seymour, back to you for item number eight.
For our investments, we had 84 million invested. We earned 105,000, 27,000 for the general fund, and 77,000 for our building fund.
Board, a motion would be in order for item number eight.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to pass or to approve the investment report as presented.
Second. It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And Superintendent, we turn to you for item 9.1.
Yes, school reports, building leadership team minutes. President Miranda and board, I'd like for us to focus on three major things, and then I'm going to elaborate a little bit on something that's gonna happen with the high school very soon. So, March 11th, I want parents to remember that's daylight savings time. So, make sure you get your kids to bed early so they can get up and be on time for school. Fourth quarter begins on March 12th, so that's our last charge to keep those exceptional grades going. And then we have a report card distribution on March 16th for third quarter. And finally, on March 17th, which is a district-wide fine arts fair, it will go from 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock on March 17th in the Wooden Woods High School cafeteria. And finally, I'm sure everybody's heard about the students' voices, about expressing themselves about the atrocities that are happening in our society with violence. And so, on March 14th, there is going to be a special event where the students came to the administration in the high school, and they want to acknowledge the students that lost their lives in Florida. So, they will have a walkout, but this is gonna be a very different opportunity. It's the students and staff joining in together. And the students are going to give special recognition to every child who lost their life. And it's going to be a special ceremony in the stadium so that all students can be there. And then there will be a special ceremony where students' names will be called in a special, just overview of each kid that had to experience that tragic situation. So, we're hoping that the public can be there to join us. That's why we're having it in the stadium, so that everybody can fit. This is a chance for the entire community to come together, and I'm hoping that the board will also make time to be present. So, that's one of the major pieces. It's March 14th. I'll give you guys, they're working on it. But this is not something that the administrators came up with, this is all students' center. And when we start talking about project-based learning and moving students in that direction where they're taking responsibility for their action, and they know when things are not right, I think we're creating leaders for the 21st century, and that's what our whole design and plan should be about. So, keep that on your calendar.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions before we move on to 9.2? All right, Superintendent, back to you.
This next report is the trend data for transportation and business manager, Mr. Denny, 9.02.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Mr. Seymour, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Denny.
So, thanks for the opportunity to just update the board and our community on our bus fleet, our transportation department. We saw our food service or child nutrition department celebrated earlier, and they've done a fine job. We've got a great bunch of people in our transportation division as well. Thought I'd give you just a little quick background, just to give this some context. We've got some data from, this is U.S. Department of Transportation data. It's just about the state of Ohio. 857,000 K-12 students are transported in Ohio every day. That's out of 1.2 million students in Ohio. 71% of the public students in Ohio are transported by bus. 122,000. And there are almost 16,000 yellow school buses in the state of Ohio. And they travel 180 million miles a year, so, just some numbers. Despite those staggering numbers, yellow bus transportation continues to be the safest form of transport for students. So, it's one of the reasons you see public districts continuing to utilize that transportation. It's efficient, keeps pollution down, and it's also extremely safe by comparison to any other method. We have 43 buses in our fleet, and this is as of February of this year. Our frontline fleet, the buses that run the routes every day, are about 5.3 years old on average. The sub-bus fleet is 14.9 years old, so that's when a frontline bus goes down, we fill in with that. We have 28 frontline buses and 14 sub-buses. And the average age of our 42, excuse me, 43, 43 bus fleet is eight and a half years on average. Just by comparison, in the U.S., 9.3 is the average age of a bus, and 9.42 is the average age in Ohio. So, your fleet is actually younger than, on average, than the typical fleet in the United States or in Ohio, which is a really good standard, because that helps keep your maintenance costs down and helps keep safety records up. So, that's all really good indicators. What you should have before you are three reports. One is pupils by service type, the other is miles by service type, and the last is kind of what I would call the so what report, which is how does it compare to prior years, because otherwise it's just kind of numbers in isolation. So, that would be the T1 trend data for transportation report. And so, transporting students, you can see how many were within a mile, how many were more than a mile, and how many were special education. This is all the data we support, report to the state, by the way. And then you see miles by service type. So, our buses run about 2559, 2,559 miles a day. That comes out to a little under half a million miles a year. And then finally, probably the most informative report is the T1 trend data. You can see longitudinally going back to 2009 what these numbers look like in these reports. So, how many pupils are transported by day, each day, how many miles were driven each day, and so forth. So, happy to entertain any questions you might have. That's the summary of the transportation data for the last school year.
I had a question. I noticed on the pupils by service type, at the bottom of your key, I don't see the service type of 1A.
Yeah, 1A is a special type of bus that we don't have in our fleet. So, it's not reported for our district.
So, well, it's a special type of bus, or?
Yes. It's a, like an 18-passenger bus. It's a special type that we don't have in our district. We have 72-passenger conventional transit buses, and we have 54-passenger special needs buses with bron lifts to serve our students who have ambulatory disabilities.
Okay. It would be good to have that, you know, and we're looking at it so we know what that type is, because it's mentioned in the body of the report.
I see what you mean.
Any further questions for Mr. Denny? All right. And just to clarify, Randy, we don't need a motion on this. This is just for...
Information.
Information. All right, perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Denny.
Thank you.
We appreciate that information from the Department of Transportation, too. All right. So, at this time, we will have a motion to go into a closed session.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters, specifically the employment of an employee.
We'll need a second, board.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And for Waycross and our attendees tonight, we will return to resume the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
All right, we will now resume our regular meeting. And Superintendent, we will turn to you for item 10.01.
Yes, Madam President and board, the recommendation is to approve the exempt salary schedule effective February 27th. And please note, there were no increases that had to be included, only a title change.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the exempt employee salary schedule as presented effective February 27th, 2017.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or concerns or discussion? Did you mean 2018?
2018, sorry, 2018. Yes, I did mean 2018.
I was like, wait a second, what year are we in?
Sir? No, 2017.
You said it didn't change.
Very good, good catch.
Any additional concerns, discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes, and on to 10.02, Superintendent Smith.
Yes, Madam President and board, the recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules as presented. Schedule A, resignations and retirements. Schedule B, certificated staff. Schedule B, support staff. Schedule D, extra duty and supplemental employment. And finally, Schedule E, leaves.
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Second. It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and Superintendent, item 10.03.
Yes, Madam President and board, the recommendation is to approve the annual proposal for overnight extended student trip, Wooden Woods Intermediate School, 5th grade, Camp Campbell Guard, Hamilton, Ohio, May 21st to 23rd, 2018. Mr. Birdy, as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for overnight extended student trip, Wooden Woods Intermediate School, 5th grade, Camp Campbell Guard, Hamilton, Ohio, May 21st through to 23rd, 2018, Mr. Birdy, as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruglis.
You're welcome.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and 10.04, Superintendent Smith.
Yes, Madam President, the open enrollment policy, 10.04. Before I ask the board for their approval, I'd like to really thank Ms. Hobbs for putting a team together to really validate the open enrollment process. I think we've become very, very timely and very, very efficient. And please note, on the students' section, remember, foster place and homeless students are exempt from any of these requirements. We must accept them because of their extreme circumstances. So, the recommendation is to approve the 2018 open enrollment policy as presented.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2018 open enrollment policy as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and Superintendent, 10.05.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to call up Dr. Ragland to give a first overview of our new courses, Exercise Physiology and Forensic Science. Don't think that the exercise physiology creates the forensic science. I don't want you guys to get misled.
Good evening. We have two new courses that we're proposing at the high school, and I have asked teacher Jared Narenberg, who teaches physical science, geology, and earth science. Jared, if you could step forward, please. So, Jared has proposed these two courses. And Jared, would you please share your rationale behind your proposal?
So, we are proposing this initially because our kids are now eligible for a STEM, or a STEM bat degree when they graduate. So, in order for that to happen, they need five science, five math, and then two electives in either one of those. So, we want to provide for them the most opportunities to get these science credits while working with their already busy schedule that they already have. So, what we're gonna do is, I currently teach two semester classes, so every other year it'll rotate so that they have the opportunity to take additional science classes. We chose forensic science and exercise physiology just for, mainly for the sheer excitement. Like I said, I currently teach geology and earth science, while I find it relative and interesting that kids don't necessarily find that to be interested. So, we wanted something to grab their attention and make them want to take, take the science classes, not just for the STEM kids, but for all the kids. And that's really why we chose these two courses in particular.
Also, Madam President and board, when I, when we had our meeting, one of the things that both gentlemen, Coach C, as well as Mr. Narenberg, mentioned, these are things that kids could get excited about and possibly major in the future. These courses would not be vetted if this was not something that our kids could possibly go on and, you know, make this into a career choice. So, I was very excited that both gentlemen were very, very enthusiastic about our kids using this as a launchpad to something more exciting along the way.
Absolutely. We have, I mean, our kids are more likely to be nurses and physical therapists than they are geologists and environmental scientists.
I think that's awesome. When I was reading the recommendations, I thought it was really good that you all had the forward thought about how do we expand opportunities for our students, not having that additional science class that may prohibit the students to be able to get that STEM diploma is, you know, kudos to you all for thinking about how do we provide additional opportunities, academic opportunities, for students to expand upon the sciences in the STEM-related field, so...
Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, board, a motion would be in order for 10.05 first, and then we'll go into the next one.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first course, the exercise physiology, as presented.
Second. It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one point I would like to make with the exercise physiology class, that there was zero cost associated with it, with the course?
Yeah, that was good.
That is good, yeah.
And I also appreciate, because it gives kids an opportunity to look at things, the same things in a different format. And it may give them an opportunity, have greater interest to take another physiology class later where they might not normally be interested in it. So, I appreciate the insight and the excitement. We're excited about these programs, too.
Yes, Lord knows we need more folks in the STEM and STEAM technology fields. All right. So, seeing no further discussion or comments, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and we will go ahead and take the motion for 10.06.
I actually combined both of those together.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
She did.
And the motion did, too?
Well, she didn't combine them.
No, I didn't. I neglected my apologies.
So, we'll go ahead and take the motion then, sorry.
Well, part two of my motion, to approve the new course, forensic science, as presented. They were so good, we had to do them separately.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruglis?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And we do not have any items under 11 this evening, so we will just move right into 12. Board members, Superintendent Smith and Treasurer Seymour, there are two articles that I placed at your desk as part of the legislative report for tonight. Obviously, the biggest thing going on is the so-called merger of ODE, the workforce in higher education. To Mrs. Kinn's point earlier, there's been not a lot relatively of news coverage or media surrounding this bill, but there has been lots of testimony, and there's going to be more testimony. I went out and did some due diligence and actually asked some of our professional administrative staff, our superintendent, and a bunch of others from other districts, too, who kind of just feel that, you know, something like this happening is just yet another undercut to public education. So, it's very interesting what this proposal is. I'm very, very interested...
So it's very interesting what this proposal is. I'm very, very interested in how they plan on running something like this and combining those three departments and making it run efficiently, since we all know how ODE is awesomely run and such an extravagant department as it is or as it stands. So there's something else related to this, too, that you all just got an email on. I just saw it come across my inbox regarding HB five twelve as well, which is something else proposed similar to this, which would get rid of our state Board of Education. So again, I just wanted you to be aware of this. This was one of the best articles I found regarding it, since there is such a lack of. This was from the Cleveland Plane Dealer, and I did not print out the entire briefcase from OSBA or this new email in an effort to save paper. So that is that, and I'll keep an eye on that, and I would encourage you to do the same, because this could be something big and very, very important to keep watch of if this does go somewhere. Also, I sat with you a policy brief on the five twenty-nine College Advantage Ohio Savings Account. There's something going on with this as well regarding saving for higher education. I won't read this aloud to you, but this is just for your information only. And again, the briefcase edition for this month was very good and nutritious. It has a lot of information in there, a lot of workshops that are coming up, so take a look at those. If you're interested in any of them, please tell Mr. Seymour, and he'll get you signed up for them. And that is all I have for you for the legislative report. Mr. Burdy, I'll turn it over to you for the Oaks report.
For the Spotlight on Students report from the Oaks, we talked about this last time, Alec Willards, who had received the ROTC scholarship that was valued up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and he's the first and only Great Oaks, I believe, Scarlet Oaks student who has ever received that scholarship, so that's kudos to Alec. And then outside of that, I do have some legislative reports related to the career technical side of the school districts that I'll share with all the board members.
Thank you, Mr. Burdy. All right. Our next item is comments from members of the Board. Dr. Johnson, we will start with you.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Burdy?
I did have the good fortune of going to Donuts with Dads at Primary North with my grandson a couple of weeks ago on a Friday morning, and glad to say, it was packed. The cafeteria was full. There were people standing, waiting for people to get up and leave so that they could get a seat with their children. So it was, it was well-run. Thank you to everybody, the staff, PTA, all those involved with setting that up. It was, it was a great, a great time. I wanted to thank, you know, Janine Hunshi, the teacher that was here. Her and Jamie Hoag did a webcast, you know, it's out on the Witten Woods, you know, related power, you know, the problem-based learning, and their comments were enlightening, and I would encourage anyone to go out there and listen to that. The Night of Freedom coming up on March twenty-second, Mr. Smith has already talked about that. You know, it's fantastic, our kitchen staff, our food staff getting the Clean Award. I think that's, you know, that's important. That, you know, goes to the health of our children, and that's, that's what we all want. We want to make sure that we're doing everything to keep our children safe. And then as far as the construction updates, there are community meetings that are scheduled in April. There's one at Forest Park on April fifth, at the Forest Park Senior Center from six to seven thirty, one on April tenth, at the Witten Woods Middle School from six to seven thirty, and then there's one scheduled in Springfield Township, and I don't know if a place has been, it's what? The Community Arts Center on April sixteenth from six to seven thirty in Springfield Township. And that's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Burdy. Mrs. Kuhn?
I would like to continue to give honor to our teachers and our students, and I appreciate the teachers and our staff creating new ways to interact and engage our children through the new programs that they designed and the new curriculum. Additionally, I do think that was powerful. Mr. Smith brought up the voice of our students that they want to do something to reach, to say something about their commentary on the world with their protest. We'll call it, it's more of a vigil for March fourteenth. I think that's powerful, that our students have an opportunity to be relevant and have their voices be heard. I think that's an important piece of cultivating good citizenship, so I appreciate that, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn and Mrs. Ruggles.
Yes, as far as the Student Achievement Committee meeting that we had, it was very informative. I think Dr. Holden and Dr. Raglin and Mrs. Denny, they gave us an update on the Freedom Center, and the theme being rise up, which I think is very appropriate in some of the activities that we're doing within the district, meaning the cultural competency workshop that we had, meaning that we are focusing on some things that helps us rise as a community and as a district. Earlier, I think last week, I attended the Urban School District Advisory Network meeting along with Mr. Burdy and Ms. Kuhn, and we had a lot of good information, the legislative issues. We did talk about what Mrs. Miranda brought up, you know, that the governor is going to appoint a director with whom he's going to appoint, the director will appoint two other assistant directors, which will be very interesting on the impact of how this whole thing shakes out. So it was really good to get that information along with several other legislative updates, and then really an in-depth idea about the changes with the report cards, so that was very informative. And again, kudos to the curriculum staff for the new course work. And then the last thing, really piggybacking off of what Mrs. Kuhn said, I think it's very important that we help our students understand where to find their voice, especially with social issues, and helping us stay ahead of some of the issues that are impacting our communities, from our, the focus on the trainings on cultural competency that's continuing to go on, but also the students' participation in the rallies around what happened in Florida with the shootings. I think it's very important that, you know, oftentimes, as administrators, as board members and teachers, we want to find ways to protect our students, but we also need to find ways to prepare them to speak up, to be able to be a part of the process of making our community better. So I'm very excited about participating in that with, it shows support to the students on March fourteenth, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruggles. To that note, everything I wanted to say, everyone already took, so thank you for highlighting those events, but there is a presentation for our project-based learning happening at Primary North on March sixth at two o'clock PM. I know it's midday and hard for some of those people that have full-time jobs to get away, but it's a project surrounding injustice that, you know, our second graders are doing, so that's pretty amazing. I can't wait for that. Again, two o'clock PM, March sixth, two thousand eighteen, kind of goes along with the whole vein of our rise up with the Night of Freedom and the vigil slash walkout that our students are doing. So I'm looking forward to those events, and may I just say how amazing it is for our students at all ages to be learning these types of world-class, you know, social justice events, because that is, you know, diversity and inclusion at its finest, and I'm very happy to see that. And that's all I have. We don't have anyone from WWTA or OPEC this evening, I don't see, but we do have a need for in another executive session or closed session. And to our wonderful Waycross partner, we will not be coming back after this one. There's no need to vote, so if we could go ahead and hear that motion for the executive session, and then we will close out.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion for executive session for the discussion of the district's security and emergency response arrangements.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move into closed session, and then adjourn our meeting afterwards. Thank you all for being here, and have a great evening.